I'm used to hearing noise. All right. With that, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, combined City Council and Town Water Planning Commission meeting to order. And we will start off with roll call. So what I'll do is I'll have Planning Commission.
Okay.
I'll have you do roll call for Planning Commission and then I will do it for City Council.
Sure thing. Commissioner Edwards is excused. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Right, Commissioner Kotick?
Here.
Right, Commissioner Steph?
Here.
Right, Commissioner Varela is excused and me, Commissioner Robbins.
Great. And then we will do City Council. Councilmember Dahlhoff?
I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Jefferson?
Present.
Great. Councilmember Forthup? Councilmember Von Holtz?
Councilman.
Councilmember Agabi?
Present.
Councilmember Althouser?
Present.
And I believe that Councilmember, I think Joan was going to come, but I don't see her yet. So, Councilmember Kathy should be showing up here shortly. So with that, we will go ahead and start. We have the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update on Land Use and Housing Elements and Development Code Update Status. And I just want to make mention, this is one of those opportunities, I think, where council and Planning Commission get to work together and kind of be on the same page. I remember many, many, many years ago when I was on Planning Commission, sometimes those meetings didn't happen. And I think it's very beneficial to kick things off and start them so everybody's kind of having those conversations and know where we're going. So Brad, are you going to start off with this? So I will go ahead and turn it over to Brad.
Also, just to let everybody know, we're going to be combining the first, the two items on the work session. We're going to try to talk through them together. I have a presentation. I'll be very quick through explaining what's on the work program. And we'll really try to focus on the discussion that we've outlined and questions and so forth. We'd like the Planning Commission and the City Council to talk together about. Next slide, please. So really, the focus of tonight's session is to focus on what our accomplishments in 2024 were. We'll talk a little bit about the 25 work program. And then, as I mentioned, we want to get to discussion between the council and the Planning Commission. In your packet and the staff report, you've included all this information, as well as the set of questions that were developed as part of the discussions with the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. First accomplishment, I'd like to have Dan Bowers, please, Dan, introduce yourself. He has been with us over a week.
(laughing).
Thank you so much. My name is Dan Bowers. I'm hired as an associate planner and I come from Thurston County directly and more experienced before that as a community outreach and education person. So I'm really excited to work with the community and get their feedback and make sure that we are hearing from them.
Welcome. Well, we are officially staffed. So I guess we're out of excuses to make sure that we.
(laughing).
But we're very grateful that Dan has joined us. I also like to point out that Erica has been exceptionally busy over the past year. She got through the Hazard Mitigation Plan update with you. Also, the Flood Plan Regulation update that we were required to do. She has been diligent with the housing element, as you probably remember from your joint tour together. As well staffing the Regional Housing Council. So I want to call attention to all the work that she's been doing. And also, I want to thank you for passing the Development Code Administration amendments at your last meeting. Councilmember Forthup has indicated that we'd like a lot more time to actually understand what's in the packet. And we would definitely like to spend more time with you, especially as we go forward with the 25 update, to make sure you understand that. Next slide, please. So there are some things that are going to be obviously continuing from the 24 work program. The first is obviously the Comprehensive Plan and Development Periodic Update. Again, that's approvals expected in December of next year. We're still working on the Bush Curry Housing Conservation Plan. We're in a much better situation, I think, now than we were six months ago in terms of where we think we're going and where we think we can end up. Also, working again with the Regional Housing Council, working on the Equity Toolbox, and also the Food System Plan. We'll be having another update for the GDC and the Planning Commission probably in February on the Food System. Next slide, please. So a little background again on our purpose of our 25 work program. Really, it's spelled out in PMC 1860 that the City Council, Planning Commission, community members, and city staff may propose amendments at any time during the year. What we'd like to do is put them all into basically a hopper for the next work program. We have slightly over 3.3 FTEs. We are able to call on Mike, for example, and a couple other staff members, as well as our full-time staff here. More than half of the staff time budgeted this coming year will be on the periodic update. That's basically updating all the elements, as well as doing all the development code associated with that. Second biggest thing will be the combination of the Housing Conservation Plan and the Regional Housing Council, which is 20% of the total. So that leaves about 28, 27% of the rest of the budget for everything else that we've got on our plate. Next slide, please. Again, this junk watch session is really an opportunity for all of you to talk about things that we've included in the work program, what the roles are in terms of how we deal with particular issues. Next slide, please. Very quickly, structure of the work program. Comprehensive Plan Amendment Doc is first, Development Code Regulations, other planning projects such as the HCP and Food Service Plan. General Management Coordination. That's all the things that we do with the Regional Housing Council and other jurisdictions. And then finally, below the line. Those are things that are identified as potential things that we'd like to work on, but we need to accomplish the things above the line before we have the time and resources to deal with those. Next slide. As I mentioned, Comprehensive Plan, which is going to be a very big role, about 40% of our total time. There are some items I'd like to call your attention to that are new. First one is we're also, as we're updating our Comprehensive Plan, we're also updating the Joint Plan, working with the county on that. We're also going to be dealing with the Urban Growth Periodic Swap, 93rd and Old Highway 9. We're in the process of working through and under the local agreement with the county about how and when and who does what. We anticipate that a lot of the work is going to follow in us because it's going to be within our repertory. So this is one that is going to be wondering here a lot of them. The other item that is related to the budget that you passed, this is why you should read through the budget in its entirety. The Parks and Rec Plan has not been updated since 2008. It was a minor update in '16, but it really needs an overhaul. We're going to be supporting the Parks and Rec Department as part of the update. It's not going to be on exactly the same timeline as the rest of the updates. It's not a required element, but we're going to be trying to tie that in. Next slide, please. About the regulation update, I talked a little about the periodic update stuff. I also want to call your attention to multi-family tax exemption. This is an item that has been requested by the House members in the past. We now have staff to deal with this. More importantly, we're up against a deadline with our own coding. Multi-family tax exemption program expires in '26. So it's an opportunity for us to do a little deeper dive into how the program is working, what things that are in state law that can be brought in now to improve the program and all of that. So that is one of another addition to the work program. Next slide, please. I want to just call your attention to some of these. These are all the other planning projects. We're expecting another annexation to come through. It's a private application. They're in the process, my understanding, of going through the process of doing the 10% efficient. Once that is completed and filed with the city, the City Council will have the opportunity to review that and determine whether to proceed with the annexation itself. Next phase would be 60% of the signatures. And so just be aware that the council may be asked to consider an annexation this year. We're also going to be starting work on Brewery Redevelopment and Action EIS and ordinance. We'll be working with the executive department's staff on that. But I expect you'll be hearing bits and pieces of that as we go forward. Energy Performance Ratings Program, you may be familiar with that. Some of the discussions we've had with Alyssa, one of the things we'll be incorporating. And then finally, Home Shelter Emergency and Transitional Housing Assessment and Feasibility. This is sort of a next step. We've made the code changes to zoning signs to allow for these uses, but this is more of a deep dive into how do we encourage and how do we work with providers to have these facilities. Next slide, please. Again, we talked a little bit about all the general coordination that we do. Next slide, please. I want to call your attention to one important below the line project. Because of the other projects, plus the planned update process, we are going to be postponing our work on landscaping, landscaping, street tree standards, and tree and vegetation preservation codes until '26. We had a good discussion last night with the Tree Board about that very issue. So we talked through what reasons we're doing that. We're in pretty good shape in terms of getting through the initial treaty to the outreach and getting draft ordinance. We have a bit of work to do internally to work on the ordinance to make sure it's a much simpler process than what we currently have. And then also go out again to the community to bring it back up to speed on the project. Get consultants on board. So that process in itself is going to be delayed until '26. The next slide, please. These are the issues and discussion topics we would like the Planning Commission and the council to discuss together. They can be in any order. They're not ranked. But we want to encourage the discussion between the council and the commission rather than us taking the lead. We can help facilitate as we need to, but we would like if it's the mayor and the chair of the Planning Commission to help that discuss. Any questions based on the five-minute summary of $5,000?
Not a long list at all. So does anybody have any comments or anything in particular?
It's a potential annexation off of 93rd. We don't know the extent of it yet. There's a misunderstanding. We're still working through trying to figure out who's going to be in and out. But it's in that direction. No, this is the. The other side of the freeway. Yeah, so on the southwest side of there.
Dan, that was by time this side.
Councilmember Dahlhoff, I see your hand up, and then I'll go to Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing, Brad, I'm wondering, I appreciate these slides and the work and the juggling act, right? And someone's always going to be disappointed, right? That their item doesn't get above the list, but it's not dropped. And I get that. The one thing is you talk about who's doing what. Is there another list or another way that you're tracking the applicable board or commission that could contribute to that? Like, what does that conversation look with the boards and commissions? Like, we're not, we still need you. You're valued. And there's a delay, but this is what we're going to do in the interim. Where is that tracked and how is that tracked?
So for the primary, most of our work program items are through the Planning Commission. So essentially, this is also the Planning Commission's work program. Where we have overlap, for example, with the Tree Board, with the urban forestry-related items, we have an annual summary meeting with the planning, with the Tree Board to talk about the various action items that are identified in the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And we went through that last night and talked a little bit about what Community Development Department is doing as part of that process. We anticipate that will be opportunities probably to work with the Parks Commission as part of the Parks and Recreation Plan. But that's really kind of the extent of those things. We rely heavily on, first of all, the council providing direction on others to be involved in particular processes if we are not involving other boards and commissions.
Thanks, Brad.
Councilmember Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, I have a question about why the urban forestry and the tree preservation and all of that ended up below the line since we were just waiting till this point in time when we put it off last year because of the state requirement. And it sounds like you talked about this with the, let's see, Planning Commission. I'd like to know the discussion because here again, we're putting aside something that it's been waiting years for this opportunity. I mean, we're very interested, we say, in climate and so forth. And one of the things most important, not the most, very important in climate is trees. And we have yet to deal with our tree preservation plan in any kind of an important way if we think climate change is critical. So how did it end up below the line?
Well, we ended up with far too many things that needed to be done in one year. This is the fundamental question, I mean, the fundamental answer. And it's a difficult process because in no way are any of the things that we've identified above or below the line things that are, in our mind, needed to address particular issues. And so we had to make a choice based on our staff capacity and our other works and the timing of those particular things, especially when it comes to the state mandated updates, of what needed to take priority in order to meet the guideline or the requirements of the RCW and other things. So it was not an easy decision. It required, first of all, a lot of discussions amongst the staff, as well as the executive department, on how we were going to approach the work program this year. There were also conversations with the Planning Commission and the Tree Board about that. But it's not an easy decision, and there's not necessarily a good answer or an easy answer to deal with those kinds of things.
Well, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear what the Planning Commission said, that they were willing to go along with putting this off. I don't remember any particular robust discussion we had among council. And I don't think I'm the only one who thinks that this is important after all these many years that we're putting off again, once again, talking about development and other things. And we still haven't accomplished, I think, a basic thing for what we say we believe in and what we're doing in some of these other, you know, good areas. So I'm frustrated taking whatever it was that staff said and what the Planning Commission had a robust discussion on. And we, as a council, have not been part of that, that I remember.
Part of the problem we have here for this coming year is it's an enormous lift to do a 10-year comprehensive plan update. It's like 2,500 hours we've got in there, if I recall. It's just huge. And when we looked at it, we were 500 hours over and we couldn't find anything that we have discretion over that was large enough except that work. And it isn't unfortunate, but it's a relatively short-term problem. And in the end, it's the council's prerogative to stop this work program. So if there's something that you can point to that you'd rather take off and move and put this on, we can certainly do that. It's up to you in the end. It's our recommendation to the Planning Commission and the council.
Well, we're going to spend 240 hours on the tax exemption thing that we haven't even talked about again yet to see how we want to do it or if we want to do it or whatever. But there's 240 hours dedicated to it in the work plan. And here's something that we have already spent a lot of time on and say that it's important, but we put it below the line. I don't know the answer to all the juggling. I'm just saying, I'm not only disappointed, I'm upset by this, this decision.
All right, any other comments or questions? So Brad, in relation to that, so when, January, will have that come back to council then and the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so the council has the, we're going to be asking the council to make a decision tonight on the path they would like to go forward, whether they'd like to move this immediately to the consent calendar or perhaps schedule additional discussion. So it's up to the discretion of the council how they want to pursue that.
When is our timeline that we need to have this to you to continue work?
We would like to have it at least by, you know, your second regular meeting in January.
In January.
And that's our typical pattern for doing this.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I would like is more time to have that discussion. I'm with Joan of how do we give, allocate some time so it's not all or nothing? So we don't, we start gathering some momentum regarding the trees. We're having upcoming issues with trees and sidewalks and that. It's all linked together. So if we could do something with a multi-family tech, that's going to be longer term. Take some of those hours and split it with some tree, urban forestry, stuff like that. Could we talk about that? That would be one option. So I guess I would like more time to talk about it.
Councilmember Agabi?
Are we talking about this, looking to change the ordinance? So where does that lead to the endpoint?
Sorry, I didn't understand the question.
I don't understand. You're discussing either. So what I'm asking is, are we looking at this with a hope or view of changing the ordinance regarding trees? Is that what the discussion is?
Yeah. So what we have had in the past is we've had the, the council has put a priority on addressing amendments to our urban forestry code, which includes our landscaping code, street tree code, and also our tree preservation codes. And we have started that process in '22 and went into '23. We had to pause for, because of the state issues with the line of urban face. And then also, we had some staffing issues. So we're now at the point of trying to decide how and when to restart that particular process. And how that fits in with all the other things that are in the work program is a discussion for the council to have.
And I just, could I just say that the restarting of the urban forestry work was told that it would be this year? That we put it off for this other reason and that we would take it up. And I thought we even hired a consultant. So that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up. I just expected that, you know, here we're going to be in 2025, which is, you know, when I thought we were going to take it up again. So that's another reason why I brought it up, just as Brad was saying. We put it aside and said that we were going to pick it back up.
Councilmember Rothouse?
Thanks. For the HCP and for the hours associated with that, is that amount of hours dependent upon any sort of federal response? Like, we've been trying to work with our federal partners for a while and it's been good in our efforts to reach out to them, but it faced challenges with that. Is the 600 hours, assuming that those challenges continue in the way that they have been? Or is it assuming that they are more responsive to our attempts to work with them?
Based on our recent conversations with the service, as well as our congressional representatives, it appears that our process is back online and that the service is willing to, more open than it had been, to talking and getting the process going. So our expectation is that the, next year, we'll be producing a final public draft of the HCP and getting that out. So our, you know, based on the conversations we've been having, that's definitely our, we're much more hopeful than we were three or four months ago.
And so we're hopeful for that. That doesn't materialize, would we know within like, like if that doesn't materialize in the 600 hours that are budgeted to this, what happens when we don't require the number of hours that we sort of project that we'll spend on a given project?
So and this holds true for any of the projects that are on the list. We would be coming back to council with, you know, providing an update to this particular project for whatever reason is going on hold. What do you want to have come off, you know, replacing that from below the line? That's really kind of the intent. I don't anticipate the HCP coming to a halt again because we, there's so much that's been invested to get us just through this, over this particular hump. That would be kind of extraordinary. But again, we've been at it for eight and a half years, so I can't provide any guarantees.
Nothing. I'm wondering, after we had our discussions, what has changed that makes you think that they're not going to make you find another rock?
Again, we were cautious, cautiously happy. We're not fully happy yet.
Yeah, we had a meeting with the congressional staff and the US Fish. Got higher-level players from the US Fish in the meeting. And so far, we're cautiously optimistic. They seem to be much more open to different approaches to get this thing done. I think we were fairly clear on that, whether it's currently.
And I might also mention, you know, we're looking at hiring a urban forester. So hopefully, that will help some of the other parts of this that we're, you know, that we're having concerns with.
One more question?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilmember Rothouse.
There's another item on here for public inquiries and general city council and any departmental support. Is that, for instance, if I'm reading through an ordinance and I don't understand the planning lingo, if I send an email to you and CC leases, say, hey, can you help me interpret this? Is that?
That's part of it. It's also the, if we have, I don't know, a large unexpected project suddenly appear on the horizon that causes lots of turmoil. That requires us to abandon everything else and focus on that. Truck stops, for example. That's sort of the.
Oddly specific.
It's happened. So we've included, that's our contingency.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? I'm a commission can ask questions, too. All right. So what I'm hearing is there needs to be more discussion on this. So does council want to bring this to a council meeting or to the first work session in January?
I'd like a work session so we have more time to like have discussions like this.
Okay.
First available date, Mayor.
Okay, so January 14th would be the first planning, or sorry. I'm looking at you guys and I'm not accustomed to doing that, work session. And so, yeah, so we can, we can go ahead and get that on the schedule for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
If we discuss it on the 14th, we probably won't adopt it until later January.
Would be the following week?
So how does that guide your work in the meantime for that? You guys.
We're just not going to show up until.
I'm not saying that to deal with it. They'll deserve it, but.
No, no, we have, don't worry, we have enough stuff to keep us busy.
It's not like they're going to be waiting for us to give them work.
Yeah, no. But it would be very helpful to us if the council members have any individual questions regarding the work program or suggestions or anything. So we have time to help prepare for the meeting and the work session with some, you know, essential solutions.
Yeah, so please send them to staff first so we have time to discuss and have that conversation. So we don't have to make guesses about timelines and.
Thank you.
All right. So is that? So Brad, did we get everything?
We, I think on the work program side, I think if we have discussions on particular issues that the Planning Commission has, I think, Elizabeth, if you want to help with that in terms of the questions that we discussed at your last meeting.
I, sure. I think, you know, the, I don't know if you can put those back up again, the kind of the things that we talked about, putting on our, you know, putting on this joint discussion area or discussion. But in general, we just wanted to, I say, say, you know, make sure we're doing the, doing the work that's going to support the council in making decisions. And, you know, kind of just with this, just immediate conversation we've just had, I think it's very important, you know, for us as a, as a commission, I think it's very important, you know, for us as a, as a commission, we, you know, we're not necessarily, um, gonna second guess staff's, um, estimate of how many hours the different items are gonna take. And, you know, we, we understand, you know, it's, it's just one, one pie. We don't get another pie to help do more work. And so just do, doing it all within the resources that, um, that the city has is, it's a, it's a tough conundrum. And I, I wouldn't say we, in our discussion about the urban forestry stuff, I think we were, before it got put on hold with the urban, urban interface kind of stuff, we were, we were kind of full steam ahead on that, uh, with a lot of interest in that. You know, that did interrupt the momentum for sure. Um, but I don't, I, I guess I would like and invite conversation about when we hit those hiccups, when we hit those bumps in the road by either, you know, state mandates coming down or even federal mandates coming down that interrupt our, our, our regular, regularly scheduled program. Uh, are there things that you, as council members, would like the commission to help sort out there? Are there things that we, we need to change about what we're, how we're thinking or discussing that? We're, I mean, we're doing our, our best to discuss, you know, how to weigh it all and, and approve it, but we don't necessarily have all the answers. Any, any ideas? I mean, we're, we're trying to, um, make sure we're supporting all these efforts to move forward the, the biggie, the comp plan and all its elements, and then all of these requirements that have come down in the last year, especially from the legislature. Maybe I'll just sideline, say on my own, that, boy, I hope we're working with Association of Cities to lobby the legislature to stop for a while. Okay, my, my old two cents there. Uh, but you know, there's, there's a lot that the legislature has put on all the cities, um, to do without necess- I don't know, I don't know that there was necessarily, you know, resources to help accomplish it either. So it's a lot and I'm hoping that, you know, we, we get our message in to, uh, pace it a little bit, cause we are, we're not, we're having trouble keeping up.
Yes, Terry. And then I'll go to coun- uh, I'll go to Zoom in, in just a minute. Go ahead, Terry.
I'd, I'd say that Parks and Recreation came out of that field too, weeks ago. Uh, we didn't know that that was gonna be a requirement. I, I assume that now that they're almost a separate entity, that that would be contracted out and we were sort of out of the picture. Now all of a sudden, it's, uh, not only back, it's back and it's important, so. And that's, has not been mentioned here, um, but that's also a big, a big item that's, uh, caused this to happen.
And, uh, part of that is, is we're really playing a support role, uh, to the Parks and Rec and their consultant. But there are things, because it's the code adoption, it's a policy adoption, that we will have to perform, as well as obviously make sure it works with everything else that we, so that's what our, our role will be.
And then, um, I'll just add that the, the Parks and Recreation Plan is, um, very out of date at this point in time. And, um, there are lots of needs in our park program, uh, citywide. And so part of the reason for doing the Parks and Open Place Plan in this particular timeframe is to ensure that we are qualifying for a really significant grant, statewide grant funding program called the Recreation Conservation Office that funds a lot of recreational and parks projects, including habitat restoration projects. Um, and, and in many cases, those grants require that we have this plan in place and that it not be more than six years out of date. So we have, um, in essence, lost out on opportunities to fund our parks and recreation activities and some of the habitat restoration, uh, that we're trying to do because we don't qual- because we don't have that component, um, uh, available and updated and accurate. So it, it is, um, the, the planning commission and the planning staff have a supporting role largely from this procedural standpoint, because it is considered a component of the comprehensive plan. So it has to go through all of the public hearings and the process and the community outreach that's required by GMA. Um, and it also is really important that, um, it is coordinated and consistent with the land use element, with the transportation element. So there has to be that oversight by the planning staff in terms of trying to ensure that that, uh, that that plan is, is, um, is, uh, coordinated and supportive of the rest of the comprehensive plan.
The plan was out of date when I was on the Parks and Rec Commission, so I'm wondering what is their part on this? Because I, I, I still get notifications of all the meetings that are being canceled. So, um, can they take some of the load first and then have?
They'll, they will be the lead essentially in helping draft the plan itself. So really the role for our department will be, again, again, supporting the procedural update, making sure it works with everything else, those kinds of things. But that in itself does require some.
Sure.
Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff and then Councilmember Kathy.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, going back to Elizabeth's comment, like if there's any hiccups or what council would like, for me, I would love, there's so many plans. When I was on council, we were working on the Capitol Boulevard border plan and the Brewery District plan. So when we're doing these comprehensive elements, we're really shaping the future of our community, which is a huge responsibility. It's thrilling and could be terrifying at the same time, and it's a huge load. How are you also like doing the bumpers on a lane, right, of the Brewery District? The Capitol, like setting us up for success with all these other plans that are really, really great plans? That's something I would love the planning commission to do, is all the ele- other elements that have been developed. How are we, how are we trending? Are we going in the right direction? How are we setting ourselves up to offer those type of businesses? The other thing I would love the planning commission to do is you're thinking about your work, about how to choose Tom Water, every aspect, every age, every stage of your life, to live, work, play and visit. How do you choose Tom Water and what do you need? Right? I just had a neighbor said, I can't buy a suit in Tom Water. Right? So I would love that type of lens for planning commission is how do we get people to choose Tom Water? And what do those elements look like? And how do we set that up to happen with the comprehensive plan, with all those other plans? So that's one thing I would really appreciate planning commission to do.
Yeah, Brad.
May, uh, I think this is very relevant. Well, we had, uh, conversations with each of the individual planning commissioners last month. Uh, and one of the important things that we heard was that we were, obviously on the staff level, we're so focused on meeting state requirements because there are so many of them. What we feel that we're losing is the community vision part of why we're doing this plan in the very first place. What thing, and playing off the, with what Councilmember Dahlhoff said, from our perspective, it would be helpful for the planning commission and the council to talk about how we can ensure that we're doing that with the joint work sessions that we'll be having with you over the next year on the plan update.
Councilmember Kathy.
I'm glad I'm not on the planning commission. Poof. Um. I, I wanted to just say that when Elizabeth said, uh, you know, made her plea, you know, said, uh, how difficult some of these things are to track and what, what are we thinking and all of that kind of stuff? You know, some of this comes, uh, simply from hi- history. There's history here. Like, like I was just mentioning in this tree ordinance thing, there's just tons of history here and thoughts and feelings and needs that need to go with some of the things also that Lieta is saying. It's connected to land use and to, you know, our planning and, and so forth. And so, um, I don't, I don't know exactly how to bridge the gap, but I think that it, it would help the planning commission to, I don't know how this will happen, you know, get, get more history behind a certain thing that now needs to be taken care of, like Councilmember Dahlhoff was saying when she was on the planning commission. So, um, and I know that, uh, you know, Michael was on the planning and then, and so forth. So I think we need to share a little more history or help maybe with, with one another or, um, you know, say what we, we want or what's bugging us or, you know, either, the, the, we've always talked about this all the years I've been on council, communication between the planning commission and the council. And maybe this is a time to take that, um, seriously and, and do more, do more with that. And, uh, look at the plans, what we have, you know, what we have coming up and what we're, what we're hopeful for and, and what we want to have happen in Tom Water. I think this, it's, I think it's a big deal. A good deal, but a big deal.
Thank you. Councilmember Rothausser.
Thanks. Uh, I, I totally agree with you, Joan. I, I remember when I was on the planning commission, one of the things that I would sometimes feel frustrated by is we would invest all this time and effort into working on something and then sometimes the council would just sort of veer in the opposite direction and just make a different decision. And the lines of communication between the two entities, when that would happen, would be kind of non-existent at the time. Um, so I have sort of essentially two ideas that I think require commitment from us to, to you all so that we have a more meaningful relationship. And one I think could be is, is where when we do have decisions like that, the model that we use at the Regional Housing Council that I think has been pretty successful, um, has been where we have a disagreement with our advisory bodies. Instead of just changing it and adopting whatever we want, we send it back for reconsideration for the planning commission, sometimes with recommendations about what our thoughts are, so that there can be another bite at the apple. Um, I realize that sometimes time would demand that that might not be possible if there's something that we have to enact by a date certain and maybe we're running up against the clock. But that's a model we've employed at the RHC that I think has resulted in more meaningful communication between the entities. And I think secondly, perhaps, may, maybe if that isn't feasible to implement right away, is at meetings like this, we can also have a portion of, um, being retrospective about, um, certain items that maybe we did depart on recommendation so that we can talk about why we thought that was the right decision and why, um, we still appreciated the input and the insight, but in the end, we ended up making a decision for whatever reason it was. Like, there was a recommendation recently in the general amendments from the planning commission about the multifamily tax exemption and we decided that that should be considered as part of the MST E last year, eh, or next year, rather. And unless you've read the meetings of, of our general government committee meeting, you know, you might not have known that because, and maybe that's on me to be a more communicative chair, um, to sort of open that dialogue. But I, I think there's ways that we can reflect to make sure that, um, the process that you all contribute to that we appreciate so much is honored more meaningfully and so that we can really have a more robust and of, uh, collaboration on things like that too.
Sounds good. You, you, Michael, you sound like an old, uh, not old, but, um, but someone who, someone who has served on. I mean, what you're saying is what you've experienced, so I, I appreciate that. Sorry about replay.
I, I always appreciate all the old. I, seasoned, how about seasoned?
You're the youngest.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah, I don't know that, I think I'm, and maybe you too, that I'm the, one of the only council members that have never served on the planning commission, so I don't have that range of expertise that, you know, that you all have had to go through. Um, but one of the things I did bring up the other day was that, um, I always look at the minutes of the GGC or the planning commission before we take on a big packet, because I, I look at your questions, I look at your thoughts. I read that. It helps me be prepared, uh, for things that I didn't know that I should be looking for. And so I, I really look, uh, I would like if there's any way that we can get the minutes when, as we're moving forward. I realize it was, it's probably a real tight turnaround, um, cause the meeting was like the 12th and so, and I realize we've got Valerie. Anyway, I, I'm not trying to make unrealistic, um, requests, but it really is helpful to read as far as communication goes. For me, as a council member, to see what you all have said and the questions you've brought up and the discussion points that have come up, so. So that would be something I would like to see, uh, moving forward this year, if we can expedite that on these bigger packets.
I think, I think there was, there was a tight term on term specifically on that set of, of actions. Um, the other thing, however, is, um, uh, my understanding is the direction is that we are moving towards action minutes, which are not going to be the long narrative, but instead we're going to have bookmarked video, right? So we, we upload the video for all of the meetings pretty quickly. And they're supposed to be, and I believe they are, Tracy's behind me, she will maybe nod or say yes or no, but. So we upload the videos pretty quickly after every meeting that happens and then try to flag or bookmark where the different top, agenda items are at least, so that you can kind of track your way through the video.
Okay.
So moving into 2025, we aren't gonna have the long narrative minutes any longer. It's instead going to be shifting to, you know, these, these are the actions that were taken at this particular meeting. And then you're gonna go to the videos online, um, bookmarked in order to be able to get the details. So I, I appreciate that and, um, you know, if that's something that we need to reevaluate, we can look at that too. But that's something that, um, it's my understanding we've been moving towards in terms of efficiencies of time and energy and cost, um, uh, for, um, since 20, since the adoption of the 23, 24 budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Are those videos gonna be accessible to those that maybe are, don't have normal site ability, you know, regular site ability for hearing ability?
It's my understanding we have, um, access information on our website to help people who have accessibility issues. I believe we have a person who's designated a contact person for those.
And what about people with broadband issues?
Um, so my understanding is that the, um, the platform is YouTube and/or the website. Um, I don't know.
But it, there's no ability for someone to write in and say, I want the minutes from these meeting days. And I don't have access to the internet, so I can't go and watch the video, is what I'm asking about for the individuals with that. Not everybody has the access.
So, so the official minutes will be available, but they will be action minutes. I, I'll need to, I'll need to answer your question, um, after talking with the administrative services staff and the communications staff. I, um, I'm speaking from, uh, decisions and actions that were implemented prior and I'm not sure. I believe those issues have been discussed. I, I just, I don't have the answer for you, but I could certainly check and get back to you.
And I understand, like, it's, it, it sounds like that's a great time saving. I just worry about people with accessibility.
Well, and, and, and for them to get the written minutes, they still have to get ahold of us too.
Right. But there have to be written minutes to request, like you can pick up for some of the calls.
There, there will be written minutes. There will be written minutes that are part of the record. It will be action minutes. It'll be, here is the agenda topic, here was, um, is the action that was, the motion that was made and the action that was taken.
That's not all the.
It's, it's, the minutes that we produce right now are essentially near transcriptions. And, um, and we pay a lot of money actually to have our person do that. She does a great job. Um, um, the choice was made, as I said, to move towards the action item, written action item minutes as the official record, because that's really what you're obligated under the statute to provide. Um, and then utilizing the videos with the, with the bookmarking as a way in which, um, people can actually see and hear the. I will do more work to find out how those videos are, what platforms those are all available on.
Go ahead. Thanks, Mayor. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a bit of middle ground. Um, Brad and I have had a little discussion because we knew that, for example, you council members who are out really looked at the minutes and I hope everybody else did too, but then there's recently been, you know, pretty good lag time, um, uh, between when the meeting occurred and when the minute, minutes would come out and, um, and which makes them not as useful. But I worry about going to strictly action item, action oriented and videos, uh, not only the accessibility issues, but content. Not everything that the, uh, the commission discusses at a particular meeting might have an action item that, but there might be points of discussion that would be relevant to capture. So I'm wondering if some middle ground is some sort of summary notes? So you get more of what the, the flavor of the discussion and points raised that's still useful to, for record and for use with the council or any, anything else. And, and that's maybe still easier to produce than the formal verbatim type minutes, um, you know, that is very, very costly.
Right.
So, you know, to me, that, you, you're gonna lose something if you just do action oriented.
But you'll have the videos.
Well, the videos, uh, might be useful unless there's an accessibility, but they're more time consuming. time consuming to sit and go through the whole, the whole clip.
That's why when you click on something, it goes to that part of the video.
Yeah, as opposed to just reading a sentence, which you're done in, you know.
So, so, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but then we would have to rehire that, the person who's doing it or have staff do it, which then, where is that, where is enough, where not enough? And where do we get, because we're, we're not having a contract with the person who's been doing it for all these years. So then it goes to staff or somewhere else. So this was a discussion and a decision made a couple of years ago to pull that out starting this year, ending in 2025. So, you know, again, we make discussions, so we're going to have to revisit that. But at, you know, somebody's going to say, well, I want, I want this, but then somebody else is going to say, oh, no, I want to have this part, or we need to have more discussion. And then, you know, we don't have a contract with the person who's been doing the minutes up to this point. And then I also hear more complaints about, well, geez, we're two meetings away and we haven't had these minutes yet. So how is timeliness or details or what is the part that we want to focus on that is most important? And how do we get there? Because the detailed part takes time, and how much detail is enough detail for everyone? And I don't think this is going to be a conversation that's going to be able to be perfect for everyone. So as special requests and needs come up, we will be able to track them and be able to make adjustments moving forward that there is a group of people that need something different or additional that may not have that. So how, how do we get there? So, you know, I mean, the contract ends, we have to figure this out. So, yeah.
Is there a way we could get an example, a visual example where you can play and show us, so then everybody's kind of on the same page of what this looks like and feels like?
In terms of the video or the actual minutes?
Yeah, like how this is all going to function, the action minutes with everything, just so we all see it and say, oh, okay, this makes sense. Maybe I was thinking something different.
Yeah. So the videos already are bookmarked, if I'm not mistaken. So, and I can correct that if I'm wrong. Part of the, part of the internal working group, because now the person that was hired to do this, now the action minutes are going to be produced by staff. And so I believe that group of staff people have yet to actually decide, figure out what the format of those action minutes is going to look like. So it may be that there is room for a sentence or two that describes a topic where it was a discussion item, and it was a discussion item only and no action taken. So we certainly can provide that, you know, as we are working through that process. And, you know, it's, it's not a completely done deal at this point. We have the, we carry the contract into the first quarter of 2025 to allow that internal staff process to occur. But the mayor's right, the, the level of detail is going to be, you know, a very subjective thing. And, and we do, now, now we contracted out, so we're waiting, but we also now are going to ask our staff, we're very, very busy, to add action minutes to their, to their list of duties. So there's going to be some definite balancing act that we'll have to, that we'll have to work out. And, and as with anything new, we, we might start a certain way and then figure out that that's not quite working. We need to tweak it a little bit and, and make some adjustments to, to make it work better for everyone.
I just really think that we need to look at this not through cost saving, not through how much time, because if it's an equity issue, that doesn't matter.
We, we look at all items as an equity issue through that lens as well?
Well, this seems like this was kind of a surprise. It was a surprise to me. I wasn't here a few years ago.
But we had this discussion a year ago or longer, so this has been a discussion.
Sure. And, and I will always, that's what my, I will always go through first, is looking at how someone who might not have the same abilities that I do, how they get their information and to make sure that's fair and equitable. So that's, it's a, it's a big deal for us.
Every, everything.
We have, we, as I said, we have, we have a communications team that looks at that with everything that we produce through the communications department. And we have a dedicated person who is responsible for ensuring that our website and our other media is, is accessible. Absolutely. I a hundred percent agree. I agree with you, and we do look at that.
So I just want to do a time check. Does council, does work, Planning Commission have to start exactly at seven o'clock?
We say seven or shortly thereafter.
Okay. So I just want to, I just want to get, have Planning Commission be able to get to their next meeting. So I have councilmember Althauser, councilmember Swartout, then councilmember Dahlhoff, so.
I was just going to add that I remember when we discussed this, I think it was like two years ago in the council and made the decision, that one of the other things that made me feel a little more comfortable with it was that because we were using YouTube, they have a transcript feature where you can click a button and it downloads the entire transcript of the video. And so that doesn't solve a bandwidth problem, right? But if someone calls in and wants a transcript, like YouTube can produce one within seconds and their staff would be able to print it and deliver it or make it available for them to come pick up. Like, some of the resources now with AI and YouTube have allowed that. I think the problem with that is it's not perfect, right?
You have to go in and you have to.
You know, like, you know, AI might think that there was T H E I R when it was T H E R E and things like that with on the phones. But I, I think that sort of feature that was available was one of the reasons why we were drawn to YouTube, just because they have a pretty good transcript feature as well.
And my only comment is that TRPC does the action item. They're not that way. And the ministers are fine. They really are. And so I appreciate those. And so I understand what they look like. The one thing that they do provide, which is really nice, I hope sometimes it's in time for, when I have to do the report at the council, but we'll, we'll get a summary. Someone will produce the summary and just real, what we decided on, just real bullets. And so then I use it to report when we, I do my council report. So, so I don't know, just suggesting something like that. So.
Sure.
But it still means that somebody gets.
And it, and they're just more bullets.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would love, I don't know who made the comment, the planning commissioner, about like the example. Second, that, I was just looking at our YouTube channel, and I don't see any bookmarks, but I do see the option for transcription, and it does make me chuckle of how they're spelling all of our names. So work in progress, valid point. And I think it was, it's all over the place. But it's there and it's, that part is accessible. And I dig that. And I think it'd be a great example of, I channeled Kelly on this, managing expectations of like the inserts to social media. Did you know if you're looking for this, right, to start setting the stage for that, that shift? So I, I think it looks great. Thank you.
All right. Any other, we will be meeting more this year?
Yeah.
Good. So this will be great. So, yeah.
Enjoy that little bit of time.
Yeah. I, I think it's, it's good to have this conversation and.
Learned a lot.
It will do, instead of doing it in silos, yes, it helps a lot. So I just want to be very aware of your time.
And I just want to say, this has been so helpful because we have been kind of taking this railroad part of information constantly. And so having this kind of feedback loop has been very, very helpful to not just be looking at all of these different boxes and ABCs, one, two, threes, and all this other stuff. So this has been great. So thank you.
Super helpful. That's been great. I think one of the things that I'm, I'm going to maybe approach the commission with and staff is to, at commission meetings, maybe get a back brief on recent decisions and discussions happening at council and, and maybe say general government or maybe anything else relevant. But we know, you know, because I don't think we were aware that a decision had been made about the minutes, for example. We just suddenly, suddenly stopped getting minutes in a timely manner. So, you know, so there's things like that that maybe we'll just have to do a better job to, on our end to hear from, you know, what, what has occurred.
So last comments from staff. First of all, we will have lots of opportunities for joint work sessions next year. Councilmembers Swartout, know that we're not going to abandon you for the next year.
No, we didn't get to that. We didn't answer all your questions.
The other thing is, we do have a celebration, our council, Commissioner Correll will be stepping down, and so we have cake. I don't want to hold that over you to encourage you, perhaps, to get your meeting done in a prom passion. That is, that will be available. It's a nice cake. Of course, we only have nice cake. It's a Wagner's cake, a Wagner's buffet, so you're invited to attend for that. And we'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to have you. Well, I asked you, I do, did we make, did the council make a formal decision to schedule the work session for the work?
Yeah. Yeah. So the direction is for a count, is the first work session in January. We'll have that. So, and then councilmembers will send questions, and so we can all be prepared before that meeting. So. It's a heavy lift.
All right. Planning commissioners, if you could grab your nameplates, those who are coming over.
And you can't, and get, and to your other.
I was looking at you guys.
All the homework is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hard. I was.
No, I just, I have a lot of that.
It's a lot.
It's the work you guys do.
After, after like, you know, something like that. And then it's quiet to go up to you. Have a good one.
This has just been a, an eye opening meeting, Mike. It's a Christmas miracle that we may actually get the HCP.
Yeah. Costco. Costco's got grape cake. It's like this thing.
So does it mean they're going to adopt the, the, all the work? Or what does that mean now as far as where we are with the HCP then?
We have a consent question. Talking to them now about the broad parameters to get buy off on those broad parameters before we send our consultants down the road and making changes to the document. Those are solvable. And we're going to help you do that.
So eventually we'll be able to, it'll come down our way and then we'll get a chance to, okay, wow.
We're getting different and better answers to our questions from the higher up person that is now attending our meetings on a more regular basis after having talked as a group with him and the congressional staff, what, you know, what we need.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Glenn, so that's working out.
So, so, Mayor, and Lisa, a quick question. Have we done our legislative priorities for 2025?
No, we have not.
Have we kind of done that?
We are participating in the shared, the Thurston County Shared Legislative Process. We also, the mayor sits on the Legislative Committee for AWC. And so we can, we can definitely bring you those two things. We don't have a specific ask for the City of Tumwater in terms of capital projects this year. So we're, we're primarily supporting the shared legislative, the Thurston County Shared Legislative Agenda and then several of the AWC initiatives.
The reason why I asked that question was because we had our Jazzcom meeting yesterday, and this topic came up about the capital expenditure for the facility. Now, I, I have not had, of course, doing any, and I wasn't sure. So I told them, I don't know. I will find out. So.
The Jazzcom, there is, I believe it's a capital request for design, is, is on the shared legislative agenda. That Thurston County Shared Legislative Agenda is being finalized this week. So we'll definitely bring that to you first, first couple of meetings in January.
All right. And then?
All right. So with that, we're going to now move into a couple of action items that we had on our agenda. And the first one is the common interest and confidentiality agreement between the City of Tumwater, Port of Olympia, Thurston County, and the Thurston County Conservation District, property purchase related to the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan, the HCP. So, Mike, are you taking that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's a great segue from just talking about the HCP. So an important part of that work is having property that we can mitigate into. Once we get the instant uptake from it, we need to have property that would be set up for area mitigation, that those, that has to happen in advance of the actual impacts on the ground to endanger species. So that's really important. Having this, these discussions even, I think, has helped forward our discussions with US Fish. But what we need to have is this agreement in place so that we can talk with our partners, as the mayor said, which is the port primarily, and the county, and also the conservation district. We need to have discussions about dollars, and those need to be under the, the aegis of attorney-client privilege, because we don't want to do that until the time is right in a public meeting, because you don't want to obviously tip your hand on a property purchase. So this agreement would simply, simply do that. Erin helped us craft this, and I know she's here. So we have questions. If you have detailed questions about the agreement yourself, I'm not your guy. But that is the, that is the concept here. The county has, and the property in question right now that we're working on, they have an appraisal. We have commissioned an appraisal, and we have that. We can't share the number with each other without making that public, without this agreement.
The only thing I would add is this is essentially the same agreement. We, we already have this agreement with the Port of Olympia for the development, the overall development of the HCP. So this really just takes that agreement one step further and talks specifically about a property purchase, and it adds in the other two partners. So it's, it's a, the format is the same, similar, and that's the same concept that allows us to act as a unit and, and to maintain appropriate legally allowed attorney-client privilege status as we're working, independent agencies as we're working together on this one topic.
Any questions, discussion? So this one is actually an action item, so I will need a motion. Councilmember Althauser.
Oh, no, I was just going to make a motion.
Very good.
Or a question, Peter?
Oh, no. I thought you have a question.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the common interest and confidentiality agreement between the City of Tumwater, Port of Olympia, Thurston County, and the Thurston Conservation District for conservation property purchases related to the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan.
It's been moved by councilmember Althauser, signed by councilmember Swartout. Any discussion on the motion? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. I've, I've learned that I have to just have that instant wait for Zoom land.
Like when there's a CNN reporter in the field.
Second and a half later.
Did it in unison, so it was quite, quite, quite symbolic, quite melody to it, guys.
All right. The next item for, that needs to take action is an interlocal agreement with Washington State Patrol for the facility use. And.
Yes.
And you can sit here if you want. Yeah.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for allowing us to take a look at this. This really came about is we utilize the state patrol facilities for different training venues, specifically for emergency vehicle operations, including their speed course and their backing course and some of the different venues that it allows. We did that training this fall. They went to invoice us, and then they realized that we didn't have a contract with them on file. They freaked out. They asked us to sign a contract. I explained to them, the normal course, we wouldn't be able to have it presented to you until early next year. They heartily requested that if we could get this completed by this year would help them out substantially. And so that's why this is here in this venue, kind of a little bit out of place. It's a contract we've had many times in the past, and it just allows us to help them out and also have access to their facilities for the next defined period of time.
All right. Any questions?
I just want to know if a chase ensued.
There were several.
Just wondering. Well, that's what they're wanting to do, right?
All right. All right. With that, do, any discussion? All right. Do I hear a motion? All right, do I hear a motion?
His committee.
Um, no, I think we've had to explain about this. So I don't, I don't have any question. I can move forward to.
All right, go ahead.
So I move and I move that we authorize the mayor to approve and authorize the, the mayor to sign interlocal agreement with WSB to use WSB facilities for training.
Hey, it's been moved by council member Gaby, seconded by council member Von Holt. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. There is a delay today. Oh, it's really fun. Uh, any opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you. So we will get that signed and out to them as soon as possible. All right. So with that, we are now at the, uh, city admin, a mayor city administrative report and, um.
But, um, so, uh, uh, thank you very much for the thoughtful, um, comments around the long range work plan. As Brad and Mike indicated, it was not an easy choice and we're happy to review that with you and, and work through some of those changes. Um, in terms of announcements or acknowledgements, um, the Christmas tree lighting was a fabulous success. And I saw the video, the countdown was the best and the switch was awesome. So thank you, council member Von Holt, for, uh, uh, throwing the switch. Um, I think, um, we have regular recurring, um, Santa night out, Santa's nights out. Uh, Kindred Park is tomorrow night and those, um, our, our communication staff is doing a fabulous job of communicating with our various departments and getting things up. Um, I've also been told that our, um, there is a video out that talks about the Transportation Benefit District and it's been uploaded to the, um, various social media sites. So hopefully you'll have an opportunity to take a look at that. Um, and I would say, um, uh, I have heard, um, lots of thank yous from our staff for, um, the budgets, uh, that you adopted and, uh, particularly from a lot of the nonrepresented staff people. They're very grateful for, um, the market rate increase. That's, um, um, I've received several different comments individually from people, um, just walking back and forth as well as, um, actual emails. So thank you very much for that. Um, and, um, I hope you have a wonderful holiday season. Uh, it's been a very busy and, um, eventful year. I use the word opportunity instead of challenge, challenges. Um, but I appreciate, uh, uh, your grace and patience as I've been learning new things. And I'm looking forward to, uh, next year. I think it's going to be a, a great year. And, um, uh, thank you so much. I appreciate being able to work for you, so.
And I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays. And you all get three Tuesdays with no meetings. How about that? So it's going to be a little great break for everyone. And then so on the seventh of January, we will start back with a city council meeting and, and, and back to, back to work. But we will have this nice break to, uh, catch our breath.
So no meeting on the seventeenth, Mayor? Is that what I just heard?
Yeah, we canceled that last, at our council meeting last week.
You can.
And, and that's why we had action tonight. So we didn't have to do that next Tuesday. So that's why we're doing this action tonight. So, yeah. Oh, three weeks, three Tuesdays, you got off. So there you go. All right, with that, I will, if there's no other comments or anything, I will have this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.